Doug, you're all set.
Hey, welcome everyone to the town of Hanover zoning board's appeals August 5th, 2020 meeting. My name is Douglas Slovich, Chairman. Start tonight's meeting with the pledge of allegiance. If you could all please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do ask that you be quiet or silence your cell phones or electronic devices and to note the emergency exits in case of an emergency. Roll call, Robert Peckham.
President.
John McGloroney.
Here.
Christian Chamberlain.
Here.
Beth Mossworth.
Here.
Heather Robinson.
Here.
Jesse Redlow.
Here.
Meeting minutes from our last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the meeting minutes from our July 1st, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Seconded by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I abstain. Motion approved. Our first application tonight is application 060 by Linda Yates. Do you want to step up to the microphone? State your name and address for the record, please.
It's Linda Yates. I live at 46 Sandbury Drive, Pittsburgh, New York, 14534.
You're here for a front deck experience, right?
Correct.
Questions from the board?
Ms. Yates, what's currently already there?
There's a deck that's been there. It's probably 40 years old and it's starting to fall apart. It's warped. And then I have another step, because I have a front door and then I have another door that goes into the front of the house. And that step is falling apart. So what we wanted to do was redo the deck, bring it back just to the step to connect to it so that it was all one. And yeah, because the one step is just, it's dangerous.
I saw that you had the two basic front doors, the one is like next to the garage and the other one's further away.
Correct.
So you're just going to remove the deck that you already have?
Correct.
And then make one big deck incorporating?
Well, it's not, well, kind of like, I guess so. It's got, the one deck is going to be the eight coming out and the 20 coming over.
Okay.
And then they're going to kind of slant it so that it just basically is a walkway to the step so that there's a step there.
So you still have a step?
Right. Yeah.
Not a full deck?
No, there won't be a full deck in front of the other door.
Okay. And you looked at some alternate means of doing that? You think that's the best?
Yeah, I don't know anything else that I could do for that area.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions, comments, concerns from members of the audience? Are there anything on Zoom?
I don't see anything.
All right, this application is closed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to application ZBA 2020-060 for an area variance, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board has one duly advertised and held a public hearing, two has considered all relevant information, and three has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variance. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings a fact. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties as they are replacing the deck and making it safer with a new one. The variance cannot be achieved by other, some feasible alternative. The variance requested is not substantial. The variance will not have a negative effect on the physical or environmental conditions. The difficulty relating to the variance was self-created. And be it further resolved that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approve the variance as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Was that Jesse or Chris on second?
Your pick.
Both it is.
Good teamwork, Chris.
Yes.
Moment of order. Do we still need to do roll, roll call vote?
No, we can go back to normal.
Thank you. Just want to make sure. Okay, that application is closed. Application 2020-061 by Javier Martinez.
Well, how are you?
Good, thank you very much. Had a little spill on the roof of this monsoon weather we're having. So I was taking care of the roof. No, slipping fell. So I apologize. I'm a little bit unraveled as it is. My name is Javier Martinez Jr. I live at 681 Erie Station Road, West Henrietta, New York, 14586.
So you were looking to add a six-foot fence to your yard?
Yes, Ms. Robinson. I'm looking at installing a six-foot privacy fence to further corral my daughter. She's six years old, autistic, and we are expecting in October another day, little baby. And thank you very much. And to prevent anything from the future, I don't know if my new daughter's going to be autistic. So I want to create a safety and security for my daughters.
Okay. And it looks like you were going to do a vinyl fence.
Yes, I included a picture in the documents. It's a tan fence. It resembles three out of the four houses on the corner of Yellowstone and Erie Station Road, my house, the neighbor behind me, Bill, and the gentleman next door who's also a veteran. His house is pretty much the same color as the three houses and the fence combines. And I've had numerous atta boys and congratulations and the fence is outstanding for what we did, you know, to mitigate the risk. And then also the gentleman who has the pool next door, he went and did some security. So just in case if my daughter were to run, he knows that she wouldn't go in the pool.
Very nice.
So Mr. Martinez, it seems here, so you mentioned that you've talked with your neighbors. So did any of your neighbors express any concern about the privacy fence to your knowledge?
No, what they were very concerned of is the security and safety of my daughter that was able to run in the backyard. And then a couple of times she went into the street, especially with lately the rain. As you know, some artistic kids are drawn to water and that amount of water rushing down, coming down the street, literally brought her attention to the street. So everyone, you know, is very adamant about my safety and security, especially for my daughters.
That's great. Thank you.
Is that one of the main roads, not Erie, but the one you're off of?
Yellow, excuse me.
Yeah.
Yellowstone Drive, excuse me.
Is that close? I know I drove by and went through. Now is that like one of the main roads to get into that neighborhood?
No, there's actually three other access points. You have one on the backside and then one next to the school. That's further down past the edge of special education office.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, no, there's a couple of ways in and out. I made sure, you know, just for my my security as well. If I need to go, it's blocked, I can go that way.
Any other questions from members of the board? Any questions, comments, concerns from members of the audience? Are there anything on Zoom?
None online.
This application is closed.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to application number ZBA 2020-61 for an area variance, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board has duly advertised and held a public hearing, has considered all relevant information, and has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variance. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings a fact. The variance will not result in undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties as other neighbors in the area have a six-foot privacy fence. The variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative. As a property is a corner lot, the need for the fence is more for safety than privacy. The variance requested is not substantial as a property already has roughly three large pine trees which cover roughly a third of the side yard. The variance will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions as the fence will not cause any line of sight issues at Yellowstone and Erie Station Road. The difficulty relating to the variance was not self-created as the applicant is requesting a six-foot fence for, or was, I'm sorry, was self-created as the applicant is requesting a six-foot privacy fence for safety concerns. And be it further resolved based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeal hereby approve the variance as presented.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Bob. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next application is for 2020-062 and 2020-077 by Lawrence Jackson Jr. State your name and address for the record, please.
Let's start again.
Good afternoon, everybody. Sorry about that. My name is Lawrence Jackson. This is my daughter, Isabella. We reside at 69 Sweet Briar No, Henry, other New York, 14467.
Okay, I wasn't sure. We're going to ask the, so Mr. Jackson, you're asking to widen your, to widen your driveway?
Yes, sir.
Entrance. Could you, could you explain a little bit as to why, why you're looking to do that, sir?
Um, there's a few reasons. One, we need a little bit more space for our daughter to ride her little Jeep around the, around the driveway. And to also make it bigger for our basketball court that we have. We want to put a professional basketball court in because our boys play basketball. And another reason is I have another automobile that I'm currently paying storage for that I can, you know, just put on the side of the house. Yeah, for your babies too.
I have no other questions.
Mr. Jackson, just for your reference, driveway extensions are actually prohibited for storage of motor vehicles.
Well, I'd be using the vehicle also.
Well, storage or parking. It's actually designed for campers, motor homes, things of that nature, but.
The automobile I'm referring to is a boat.
Perfect.
I'm curious, does she have a license for the Jeep?
We're working on that. She was, she was thumbing through the frosted flags box, but they didn't come along.
Any other questions from members of the board?
I do not have any.
Concerns from members of the audience? Are there anything online?
Nothing.
Okay, this application is closed.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to application numbers 2020-062 and 2020-077 for area variances, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board has one duly advertised and held a public hearing, two has considered all relevant information, and three has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variances. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings a fact. The variances will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties as neighboring properties have widened driveways. The variances cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative as no other alternative will provide the amount of space the applicant requires. The variance requested is substantial, but the applicant has demonstrated adequate rationale for the variances. The variances will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions as the applicant orders a vacant lot. The difficulty relating to the variances was self-created as the applicant purchased the property knowing the driveway limitations. And be it further resolved that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the variances as presented.
I will second.
Seconded by Heather. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Nope.
Have a good one, guys.
You're scary, Steve.
Application is 2020-063 by Louis Perna.
Good evening.
Excuse me.
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Louis J. Perna. I reside at 175 Conley Lane, Rochester, New York, 14623.
Could you explain what you're requesting today so we can all?
Yes, I'm requesting a 34-foot front setback for proposed addition to the house on a corner lot. So essentially, I want to add an in-law apartment to my home, okay, to accommodate family and relatives. I don't see where it's going to disrupt what the neighborhood looks like. I have no other way of building up. I have a semi-refinished basement that I don't think is adequate for older relatives. So hoping that the board sees fit to allow me to move forward with this.
And are they moving in right away or is this something that will be a while?
It'll be something to be a while.
And it looks like there was no, besides the height, you said that there wasn't many other solutions?
It's a small ranch, three bedroom. In addition, it doesn't give us a whole lot of a flexibility to do much more. And the other thing that, you know, we were considering is just based on age, we may need help at some point too in being able to have kids who live out of town be able to kind of help as well as invest in the property that we own. That's just another consideration.
I assume that the shape of the lot does give you some difficulty with your other options as well as that?
You can't go back. I can't go to the other side.
So almost any direction you go, you're going to come into a barrier.
Right, side. The area we want to go to seems to have the most, I'll lose a tree, but I'm okay about losing a tree.
Any other thoughts?
Any other questions from members of the board? Questions from members of the audience?
Nothing here.
With, application is closed.
With regards to application number 2020-063 for an area variance, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board has duly advertised and held a public hearing, has considered all relevant information, and has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variance. Now therefore, be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings a fact. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The addition will be in line with the neighborhood feel. The variance can be achieved by some other feasible alternatives. It does have other options, however, this one is in line with the feel of neighborhood and is the smallest impact. The variance requested is substantial. This is a sizable addition to the house, however, it has, doesn't have many other choices. The variance will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions, and the difficulty relating to the variance was self-created. However, the needs have changed over time. And be it further resolved that based on the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approve the variance as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Jesse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You all too.
Our next applications are 2020-065 and 066 by Barry and Carla Simmons.
Good evening. Barry and Carla Simmons, 166 Downstreet, Rochester, New York, 14623.
Can you explain why you're keeping the driveway extension off the garage?
Well, the ground slopes away from the garage and where we were going to put it is where it levels out. There's like a foot and a half, almost two foot slope down.
Question I have is, you've already heard us talk a bit in the workshop about this, but I was curious to know when you put them for the permit, why it, as far as having a non-adjacent, how is, how is the, what you're proposing here considered non-adjacent? Is that something that they told you that it was, did they say why it's not adjacent?
They just, when, when I had somebody come give me an estimate and they applied for a permit and they were, said that they couldn't get the permit because I had to get a variance because it's not, it's not touching, the asphalt is not touching the garage.
Okay, because I know that we have done other ones where, there was one, I guess, last time, last month was not physically touching. There was a sidewalk in between. Is that correct?
For last month, yes.
Yes. Because the, I was doing a bit of a search before we got to your application. I don't see anywhere in the code, or I was checking the code, it didn't say, I looked at the word non-adjacent and it didn't come up at all except for the application that we're looking at right now for you. I'm not sure that we even need to have the second variance. The first one, yes, that is a need for a variance for the widening of the driveway.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know, don't believe we need to have, I'm not sure if we need to have that second variance, if it is actually something that is necessary for us to vote on or needed for you to widen your driveway. I'm not opposed to you widening your driveway like this. I just wanted to make sure that if we are going to vote on something, that is something that we need to, that is something we need to vote on.
Well, that's, that's what we were told. And when we called the town, that's what they told us we needed to do. And that's.
Okay, I understand. No, I know. I thought, I just, I'm just wondering, I want to find out exactly.
I just want to do it legal, that's all.
Yeah, because I, even if it is, I don't see where it's not, by the definition of non-adjacent, I don't see where this would be considered non-adjacent where, because it is adjacent to the, to the garage, even though it's not physically touching it. There's, at the workshop, supervisor Schultz pointed out. Also, I couldn't find anything where it said that it had to abut the garage. So I just wanted some clarification on that before we voted on that, that one variance. I think supervisor Schultz actually was, is about to speak, so go ahead, sir.
Yeah, all I would add is if you're going to go that route and not vote on it, you need to make sure that the Director of Building and Fire Prevention rules approves that as being adjacent. If, because, point is if he denied it as being adjacent, then you do have to vote on it. If he is willing to change his ruling to approves, then you're right, you can withdraw the variance. Correct me if I stray, Eric, please, but that's my understanding of how it works. But the point is, you don't want to pass on it unless Kevin has approved it for, as being adjacent.
Okay.
Eric?
I agree. And we would, we would have to ask Kevin, it looks like the, the space is about nine feet. Is that, is that correct?
Between the garage and where the driveway is going to be?
Correct.
Like, is like six feet.
Six feet?
Yes.
I guess we would, Kevin, would you consider that not to be adjacent?
Yeah, my determination was that if it wasn't, you know, abutting it, that it's not adjacent. We went through the same thing last month, like we said in workshop. It didn't even come up other than it was a little different that I think there was a sidewalk in between.
That one's adjacent, that one's adjacent to the sidewalk.
Right, so technically not adjacent to the garage. So this is, my determination is that the variance is needed because the drive, the extension is not abutting slash adjacent, directly adjacent to the garage.
Okay. So Christian, if you were going to move on it, I would, you know, limit, limit the variance to the six feet that are required.
Right. This is actually, I have mine to move on, but, and I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I just wanted to make sure that when we provide relief to the town code, that it is actually part of the town code and it's ordered properly. So I guess there's like the issue of if it was abutting that, which the applicant doesn't want to have, which I guess because of the slope, which is understandable. I just want to make sure that, and I don't want to hold up the applicant's ability to put this in either. I know that, even though we're still in summer, that you want to get it in before winter, I'm sure. I just want to make sure that when we vote on it, that it is something that is necessary. So that's just my thought.
Okay, so the determination by the, by the first official that we have to?
That we do.
On this, so.
Right.
Mr. Applicant, what is your reasoning for the need of the extension?
Oh, I have a camper that I had parked in the driveway and I wanted to move it alongside the garage.
Okay, and this is going to give you adequate maneuvering of the camper to get in and out of that?
Yeah, that's, that's why we have applied for the variance for being over 40 feet wide for swinging, went backing it in so that I don't fall off the asphalt and into the grass.
Okay.
Any other questions from members of the board? Questions, comments, concerns from members of the audience? Are there anything online?
Nothing.
This application is closed. With regard to application numbers 2020-065 and 066 for an area variance, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board has one duly advertised and held a public hearing, two has considered all relevant information, and three has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variances. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings a fact. One, the variance will not result in undesirable change to the character of the, or detriment to the nearby properties. Two, the variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative. The width is required to allow for parking on the side of the garage. Three, the variance requested is not substantial. Forty foot is taken at the widest part of the driveway. Four, the variance will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions. Five, the difficulty relating to variance was self-created. And also be it further resolved that based upon the following above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approve the variances as presented. And be it further resolved that this approval shall be subject to the following conditions. Driveways to be located six feet from the garage maximum.
Second.
Seconded by John.
Mr. Chairman, may I just interrupt? I apologize.
It says seven.
It says seven.
Okay, so it's testimony that I was going off of, so seven. Saying that the seven, is that okay with the second?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next application is 2020-067 by Pepe Jedrowski. Yep, stand up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes.
State your name.
Jedrowski, yeah, close. It's a new house, new construction. We moved in, nice area. We love that. But since it's corner lot, it's noisy and it's kind of wide open. So we thought that we erect this six-foot wooden fence that would cut down on noise. And we have drawings done by the engineer. It's more like a side along Jefferson Road. It's not much of a front. And we see a few other wooden fences, privacy fence, six-foot wide across the street along Jefferson Road. So it would be standard wooden, pre-made from Home Depot, eight foot high, eight foot wide, six foot height, and four by four pressure treated posts, standard construction, nothing special.
Can you just go back and state your name and address for the record? State your name and address, please.
Name and address. Pepe and Jedrowski. The address is 202 Locust Hill Drive, which is corner of Jefferson.
My concern with this fence is the line of sight.
My concern with this fence is the line of sight for the people leaving Locust Hill Drive, so I believe that it will block the view. Do you have any adjustment that you're capable or willing to do to the size of this fence, specifically the height, that would help accommodate the changes of the line of sight?
It will be 84 feet back of Jefferson Road. Because the front of the house is 60 plus 20 of the town, plus 14, 13, 83 feet back from Jefferson Road, it's way back.
It says 23 and a half, it says 23 and a half feet.
Or, that's sideways from the house toward Jefferson.
Correct.
23 feet, and from Locust Hill, it would be 83 feet. We can get a little bit closer, but the tank, the septic tanks are there, so the engineer decided to avoid the septic tank, that's right next to the septic tanks, 23, otherwise if we have to dig for the post, it would be right, right over the, the septic tank, so it's right past the septic tank, that's what's 23, the engineer did that.
Mr. Peckham, just for your information, looking at the scaling it roughly, it looks, appears that the fence would be approximately 40 feet from the pavement, 23.55 feet is to the right of way.
Okay.
So, it will be about 40 feet, plus or minus to the actual Jefferson Road.
That's enough for two cars, plus they're back further than what the, that tree line is there now.
Well, I will just say that for me, I have, I still have troubles approving this, because I've done that intersection a lot, and I think anything that blocks that, I think is, is difficult, and by that, sight.
And I appreciate the need, sorry.
Any other questions from the board, um?
Yeah, I'll, I agree with Mr. Peckham, I still have concerns about the line of sight, even with the clarification on the setback, and I, I have a couple of questions, sir. What did you, so you mentioned that you wanted, that you want the fence because there's a lot of noise on the property, when did you move into this property?
Just built the house.
You just built the house?
Yes.
Okay, so, do, when you, when you were going through and buying the house, did you, did you realize that it was going to be right on a main road, where noise would be a problem?
Yeah, we do a lot of that.
Okay.
More than, and we talked about it, it's there, and for the variance, also, the fact that we see other privacy fence on the, across the street, or might be.
Well, those aren't corner lots that you're referring to, so it's a, it's a little bit of a different comparable set. I have no, I have no other questions.
Any other questions from members of the board? Questions, comments, concerns from members of the audience?
Yeah, this is Supervisor Schultz, I have a question for you, I don't know, from a procedural standpoint, do you have the ability to table a decision, so for instance, could you have him put something out, like a post, at the location where the corner is, so people could go inspect it, including the neighbors who had concerns, because it's distinctly possible when they heard the 23 feet, they thought it was 23 feet off the pavement, and so, you know, it, 43 feet back, I, I, I understand exactly where Bob and Jesse are coming from, but I, I question if this is one of those things that, to make that ultimate decision, it would be really beneficial to see where it would be, and then, you know, at your next meeting, after you've had a chance to look, and after you've gotten a chance from the feedback, then make a ruling on that, because I just, which I don't, I don't know which way you're going right now. I don't know which way you're going right now, but like I said, just in terms of, because of the uneasiness, because, you know, one of the problems is, of course, Jefferson is our busiest road in town, and so, you don't want to create any issues where someone's pulling out, couldn't see past your fence, and gets clipped and hit, right, and especially at the speed they come through there, that's very dangerous, so I get where the reticence is coming from, but I, like I said, I don't know procedures of zoning board, but I was just thinking that that's a potential solution to help you guys refine your decision, up or down, is to actually physically go there and look, does it obstruct, if, if that was, you know, I don't know, again, just a thought.
Is that something they have, can't we be willing to do? Would you be willing to put the post in, at the corner of where the fence is being proposed?
Sir, we're, we're in disagreement, right now, we're not sure if we're in, willing to give this to you, so the request is, would you put a stake in the ground?
Six foot high.
Six foot high stake in the ground, and then let us drive by and address this again next month, because we don't, right now, it's up in the air, we may not approve this without having a visual of where your line is that you're going to have this.
How, how would I deal with it, if you have that 23 feet side, 30 feet, and that along Jefferson Road, alongside 6 feet?
Can, can, can I suggest this, I will ask Deputy Town Supervisor Craig Eckert to meet with him and get the post where you guys want it? That way, we're sure that it's, in other words, it meets the test you're looking to do, because clearly, he's, he's not fully grasping what we're talking about, so this way, Craig can get out there, show them, put the post, you know, help them put the post in, and that way you can make an informed, you know.
So, what do we do, postpone it?
I want this table.
Do you want to take a strong hand and see where people are before we can forward with any of this, because I don't know where the county, and I are the only ones who have been going against it. There's three there now, so there's the other four.
I don't want to do that during an open meeting.
Oh, thank you.
So, if we can.
Let's table it, let's.
We'll adjourn this application and hold it for discussion.
Yeah, we'll just hold it for discussion. So wait, we're going to pause, at the end of the session, we will address this again, so, so stay.
I'm going to take one outside and explain.
Okay. Can I get somebody to move to table that, please?
We're, we're not doing that at this point.
We'll do a discussion.
We're going to table it for discussion. Okay, our next application is 2020-067 by, oh, that's this one, sorry, 2020-068 by Darryl Fields.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening, state your name and address for the record, please.
Darryl Fields, 566 Wildboro.
This is a front setback for pergola, right? Questions from the board?
Is this pergola already, already there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's, so this pergola is already existing, it looks like, it's already finished?
Yeah, it was, it was built on a, the whole variance for the porch, I didn't know when I bought the house, was illegal, so when I went to, when I built the pergola and I got the violation, went to, went to right, to wrong, and then found that out, now I'm here.
Okay, so that, because I know it looks like, I saw on your paperwork, you'd already gotten a, a variance for the enclosed porch, you said that wasn't legal, you said, or?
Yes, so, in 2018, when I went to go get the original, we weren't ever going to enclose the porch, but it wasn't cost-effective, so we decided not to, so obviously that variance expired, so while I was sitting home during the lockdown, I built it, not realizing I needed a, a permit, so once I got the violation, I went to the town the same day to rectify it, and that's when I was informed that the porch alone was illegal, it was illegally built, so I built it on a current, on a current structure.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you built the, you built the porch after this, this spring, then, okay.
We built the pergola, the porch was already there when I bought the house, I just built the pergola over.
Okay, so the porch is already existing, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Variance is for the pergola, not?
Right, I just, I just was a little confused if the, if the porch was built when the original variance was granted, but it looks like it was already there, prior to the first variance you got, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Kevin, is there any structural code concerns that we pay attention to on the pergola? I didn't know if there was other things that were not approved on that, besides the fact that you needed.
The variance for.
Of variance.
Yeah.
Because the porch is already there, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, I think we're talking about the pergola, though.
Pergola only.
So, we issue a separate permit for pergola, therefore, that's why we're here, for the variance, for the, for the pergola itself.
Does the pergola meet all other code?
I, I have not been out to look at it, I, I don't know if Ray, my assistant, or my residential inspector has been there or not.
So, the second part of this is, if, if we all agree to approve this, the next part would be that?
We have to get a permit.
Your person would go out and, okay.
It'd be a pre-existing structure permit at that point.
Okay.
But the porch was never given a?
Um, I, I don't have that information, I don't know, I know he got the variance back that said 2018.
Right, that was to enclose the porch.
Enclosed porch, I don't recall that, I don't know if there was an existing deck there, and then he was going to put the, enclose it.
Okay, the applicant just said that the porch was there prior to 2018.
So, the deck was there.
So, the deck was there and never got a permit for that build.
Right, so when I bought the house, it was already there.
Okay, so, we want to get, okay, so that, this application, this application's for the pergola, the porch, though, would still need a variance.
No, the porch is already there.
The porch is already there.
It was already there, but it was already built, even though, in the past, it still would need, well, you have to look at it first, I guess.
I believe the porch was legal, he was going to enclose the, the legal porch in 2018.
Right, okay.
So, that variance is gone.
Well, yeah, it expired, I didn't even know that, so, great.
I have no idea. Just, I'm just confused that wasn't.
Right.
The porch and the pergola.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
I do not have any questions.
Okay, this application is closed.
One moment here, I have to adjust one thing.
Was there anything from the audience?
No, is there anything, Heather, from the audience?
Nothing, sorry.
All right, okay, this application is closed. Have a motion, or do we need discussion?
A motion. With regard to application ZBA 2020-068 for an area variance, I move to approve as follows, whereas the zoning board has, one, duly advertised and held a public hearing, two, has considered all relevant information, and three, has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variance. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings a fact. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties, the addition of the pergola will enhance the look of the property, the variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative, no other structure can achieve the same results sought by the applicant. The variance requested is not substantial, the variances, or the variance will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions, the pergola will be built over an existing porch, the difficulty relating to the variance was self-created, the applicant desires the pergola for both curb appeal and for protection from the sun when using the porch, and be further resolved that based upon the findings, the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approve the variance as presented.
One second. Bringing in by John, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, before we can move forward, just like to remind the board to move forward to your microphone, so Heather can clearly hear your testimony, without naming any names directly.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, our next application is 2020-069 by Michael Bonanza.
Yep.
You state your name and address for the record, please.
Yep, it's Michael Bonanza, 60 Prairie Trail, West Henry Avenue, New York, 14586.
Mr. Bonanza, you indicated that you had a prior extension variance granted in 2014?
Yep.
So, with this additional variance requested, you've gotten a larger camper, you indicated?
We're getting a larger camper, correct.
Getting a larger camper, and you felt that this extension, where it moves forward, and a little bit wider at the overall width of the driveway towards the bottom of the driveway, is the best option for safety and sightline of the neighbors?
Yes.
Will that space be adequate enough that you won't need another one?
I believe so, I should be able to get my trailer and my truck all on the blacktop, because we're going to blacktop it as well.
Okay, so this is designed to not only for the trailer, but for your truck, too? And just to confirm, you are getting, the, the purpose of this extension is so that way you're getting a larger camper, so you can back it in, correct?
Yep.
Any other questions from members of the board? Questions, comments, concerns from members of the audience?
I got nothing.
So, application is closed.
Mr. Chairman, in regards to application ZBA 2020-069 for an area variance, I move to approve as follows, whereas the zoning board has, one, duly advertised and held a public hearing, two, has considered all relevant information, and three, has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variances, now, therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals make the following findings a fact. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, as there is already an extension in place, and this adjustment is of sizes relatively small overall, the variance cannot be achieved by some other means feasible, in order to keep the camper on the property, adding to the extension will be the safest option in keeping the site away from neighbors. The variance requested is not substantial, the variance will not have a negative effect on the physical or environmental conditions, the difficulty relating to the variance was self-created, and be it further resolved that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approve the variance as presented.
Second.
Second by Christian, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next application is 2020-070 by Kirk Baker.
President?
State your name and address for the record, please.
Kirk Baker, 145 Tumbleweed Drive, Pittsford, New York, 14534.
Questions from the board?
Mr. Baker, you are looking to have a 28.1 foot driveway width, so an extra four feet from what the code allows, can you explain why you need this extension for the driveway?
Yes, yes, thank you. My grown children are moving into the area, and my, my daughter and her husband have our grandchildren, and right now, there's really nowhere for them to park, we're chewing up a part of the road, a, a part of the yard alongside the driveway, they have to park halfway down the driveway and halfway off, and so we'd like to have a, a place where they can come in and, and park their cars when they come to visit, or even if they just come to drop off our grandchildren and leave right away, either is fine with us, but we, we'd like to have it be wide enough, you'll see that we're, we're asking to expand the dri, well, we're going to expand the driveway a little bit, not beyond 24 feet, but, but a little bit, just so that it's easier for them to come, and then we, we host our holiday meals, of course, so our son's car, our, our daughter and her husband's car, can park there at the same time, so, it's really for that, we're also having a, a flare put in at the end, because the driveway is angled, so just to make it a little easier access, especially in the winter.
Okay, now, what you guys are proposing to widen the driveway, is that going to fit your needs?
Yeah, I, I think so. Yeah, I think so. We actually had asked for around 27 feet and Magic Seal said, well, you know, put down 27 to 28. So that's where we, I think, I think then Ashley recommended 28 and .1. So that's where we are. That should be enough. We're going on the basic nine-foot, you know, standard parking lot size, but that would allow us to to keep the garage open and have a parking spot there right next to the garage.
Okay.
Other questions from members of the board? There being none, or there's comments, questions, concerns from members of the audience or online?
Nothing.
Application is closed.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to application number ZBA 2020-70 for an area variance, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board has duly advertised and held a public hearing, has considered all relevant information, and has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variance. Now, therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings a fact. The variance will not result in undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties as other properties have widened driveways. The variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative as the applicant is already driving on the areas where the driveway is requested, causing damage to the lawn and the need is for relatives to park in the driveway. The variance is not substantial. As the applicant is requesting an additional four feet, the variance will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions. It will have a positive impact. It will keep cars off the road and off the grass. The difficulty relating to the variance was self-created as the applicant is in need to widen their driveway. And be it further resolved, or and be it further resolved, yeah, that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approve as presented.
Second.
Brought in by Jesse. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next application is 2020-071 by Richard Krokowski.
Hello?
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dylan Bennett and my address is 879 Scottville Mumford Road, 14546. And I'm filing on behalf of Rick Krokowski, address at 42 Cascade Road, West Henrietta, New York, 1458.
Questions from the board?
Mr. Bennett, can you explain the need for the variance?
Yes, so the need is coming about because his front porch and walkway has structurally deteriorated and is visually unappealing to the houses around. So he has, you know, requested us to replace the deck with new pressure-treated wood for the framing, vinyl, and composite railings. And to do so, we have to apply and, you know, abide by your rules.
I have no other questions.
Is the deck that you are helping build, is that the same size as what's currently there?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
It's the same. Why are we getting a variance for it?
It's.
Go ahead.
It's a wooden structure and I believe because it's a wooden structure, we had to apply for a variance.
Never had a variance in the first place. Those are all steps there, is that correct?
Yes, correct. They're steps with wooden retaining timbers holding in the dirt around the area. And it has rotted and the steps are deteriorating and cracking.
Okay. So on the earth before, so it doesn't need a variance.
Understood. So is there any reason that you didn't put the, you didn't design it so that the width of it is, the distance from the house is six feet and the width is 14 feet?
No, no. The width is six and the distance from the house is 14.
Is there any reason you wouldn't turn it the other direction to lower the need for this variance?
That would impose on his driveway.
Oh, okay.
I have no further questions.
Any other questions from members of the board? Questions, comments, concerns from members of the audience or online?
Nothing.
So application is closed.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to application number 2020-071 for an area variance, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board has, one, duly advertised and held a public hearing, two, has considered all relevant information, and three, has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variance. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings a fact. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties as the new deck will be safer and more visually appealing than the current structure. The variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative as the current structure is deteriorating to the point of becoming unstable. The variance requested is substantial, but the applicant has supplied adequate rationale for the variance. The variance will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions as the new deck will be more structurally sound. The difficulty relating to the variance was not self-created as the existing structure rotted over time from weather conditions. And be it further resolved that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the variance as presented.
I'll second it.
Brought in by Beth. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next application is 2020-072 by Eric Zwinger.
Yes.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Eric Zwinger, 21 Mandantie Parkway.
Eric, could you explain to us what you're doing with this new front porch or steps that you're putting in?
Basically, the front steps were concrete and they collapsed, so we had to redo all that. We're just going a little bit bigger now.
And is it already built or are you?
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, we already built it because it's collapsed right at COVID was starting there at the beginning of April. So with the steps collapsed, we had to get something on there for safety issues there.
I'm set.
Any other questions from members of the board? Any questions, comments, concerns from members of the audience or online?
Nothing.
Application is closed.
With regards to application number 2020-072 for an area variance, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board has duly advertised and held a public hearing, has considered all relevant information and has considered the potential benefit to the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variances. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings a fact. The variances will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. This is an appealing addition and upgrade that was needed for safety. The variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative. The deterioration needed to be addressed again for safety. The variance requested is not substantial. The variance will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions. And the difficulty related to the variance was not self-created. The time and the elements have created this issue for them. And be it further resolved that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approve the variance as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brought in by Heather. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Have a nice day.
Our next applications are applications 2020-073, 074, and 075 by Hobby Lobby.
Yes, good evening. Pat Rawl, I'm with Flex Loom Sign in Buffalo's 1464 Main Street. And I'm here with Hobby Lobby. We're looking to get a variance on the three sets of letters that go below the signage that reads Crafts, Seasonal, and Home Decor. They're 18 inches high, they're non-illuminated, and this is Hobby Lobby's corporate signature. This is what they use on all their buildings around the country. We feel that, you know, it's not out of character with a lot of the signage that's in the area, including Burlington and Michaels and DSW and the such. If you want.
I will continue on that. So as stated prior in the meeting, Jefferson is one of the busiest roads. The address of Hobby Lobby is 811 Jefferson Road. So it's one of the busiest roads in town as stated prior. So Hobby Lobby needs the opportunity to compete with the other competitors along Jefferson Road. I just have some quick stats for you guys. According to a 2012 study prepared by the Economic Center at the University of Cincinnati, signs are among the most important elements of visual communication. Visual communication is provided by an on-premise business signage, is essential for the efficient function of our system of commerce and the success of money businesses. I'd like to add to that, especially during COVID right now and everything going on. It is very essential for a lot of businesses, small or large, to promote their business and what they do. You know, a lot of businesses, especially small businesses, I'm sure in Henrietta have had some affected by that, which saying that, I'm sure everyone can understand what I'm saying by that. Also, so Michael Warden is on this as well. He is with Hobby Lobby directly if he would like to add anything on his end.
Thank you, Lauren. This is Michael Warden from Hobby Lobby in Oklahoma City. 7707 Southwest 44th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73179. Basically, what we're looking at here is a small tagline to go under the Hobby Lobby, basically just to show folks in the area what we carry there. Specifically, our main departments. Michaels is one of our competitors in the area. They have a tagline on their store that claims what they sell. That's what we would like to be able to do. We've done a study in the area in New York and have shown that where we weren't allowed the department signage, we have stores that are not doing as well as those that were. And the bottom line here is to make sure that we have a consistent revenue, that we can stay there and be a help to the community. So in order to do that and stay there for a long time, we'd like to be successful. And in doing that, I believe that these signs merely just tell people what we sell. I don't think that they will even be legible from the roadway. It's more or less anyone that comes into the center. That's what we're concerned about.
Questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Waring. The last comment you made, so you're saying that the worrying won't even be very visible from the road, which I would agree based on the sign. So you say it will be visible to people who drive in there. If they're already driving in there to Hobby Lobby, then why do you need the signs about what you sell?
We're not the only ones that will be there. There are other tenants there as well. The most important thing is to let people know that what we're selling, and I don't think that we're out of line in asking for those signs, which are our typical signage. They're part of our program. So that's why you've got me on the phone here in Oklahoma, to see if we can get those signs.
The other question that I have is you are going to have some pretty good visibility from the road. You will be one of the largest structures in that development. You'll have a sign on the front of your building and the marquee, so you don't feel that that's ample enough to draw attention to your business.
It's not about drawing the attention at this point with those particular signs. It's about what is Hobby Lobby? We've had some instances in the Northeast where people don't know who we are. And so to have those, the ability to tell them what we have in that building is that much more helpful. And again, it's just as asking for a level playing field when considering our competitors that have much larger signage than we're asking for.
I'm set.
Any other questions from members of the board?
One of the things I was looking at really closely just a moment ago is you have another store currently in Webster and the signage on that location has Hobby Lobby and then on one side says Crafts, the other side says Laurel. So you don't have the standard, what you're asking for here at that other location. And also, when you said that if it's not going to be visible from the road, I mean, that's something I feel is, if the person doesn't already know where you're, who you are, how is that going to help you getting into, like I said, we touched on that. The signs should be there so that they are, you know, a guidance for people to know what you are. I don't know exactly if there's a reason for all the signage to be, for that much signage to be there if it's not going to be a benefit to the.
Well, and we can make it larger if that's what you're saying, because we'd love for it to be visible and legible from the road. But trying to keep within the square footage allowed here, we have shrunk those signs in order to get them on the building so that they'll be of use to us. We feel they will benefit the store's success in that location.
I just have a quick point of order for our director of buildings here. So if we grant these three sign variances, am I correct that these go in perpetuity with the land? These are not just for the business?
That's correct.
That's where I have a significant issue. Thank you.
We didn't grant the, at any point in time, I don't recall granting any signage that was above square footage, correct, requirements? Square footage requirement. Just for sake of saying, the size of this sign, if it was.
Did you mind listening for it in microphone place?
Oh, I'm the one. Just for sake of saying, it's the fact that they're keeping all the same size. We have determined prior that the extra words that they put on the bottom are actually considered separate signs. So the square footage is not a problem. It's strictly the fact that there's four words. If they had pictures instead of that, we wouldn't be questioning this, apparently.
Sure. I appreciate that perspective. I just still have a concern with granting that number of signs in perpetuity with the parcel. That's where, it's not so much about, it has nothing to do with Hobby Lobby specifically. I don't like the idea of it being in perpetuity with the parcel.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns from members of the audience?
I actually have a question. The design of the building, essentially the only windows are where the entrance is. Could you give some rationale why you don't have other windows within this large building property that would give potential customers a view into what you have so that you wouldn't need these additional signs?
Actually, in the front, there is a vestibule that bumps out and the, there'll be glass there across the front that is, that will have items staged in those areas and then the entrances will then be on either side of that.
Okay, so the 82-foot on either side of the vestibule have no windows?
The 82-foot does, yeah. If you're looking at, let's see, do you have, it would be the third page in the documents that were submitted. Says clear, one-inch insulated glazing. That's glass.
Right, so that's the bump out that you're talking about, correct, for the vestibule?
Yes.
Okay, and the 82.8 feet on either side of the vestibule?
Is just wall. That's right.
Wall. So traditional businesses, when they have this large of a presence, usually have some type of window that you can put in display? So is that like a self-created detriment that you don't have that to help draw the customer as to what you have inside?
I appreciate the question. I'm in store planning and I do not do design. I'm not in construction. So that would really, I would really be out of place explaining why our construction is. is designed the way it is.
I think it's more shelf space on the inside.
Yeah, there is definitely more wall space and shelf space. That is correct.
But having a small window built into that, I think that would offer a customer that drive by, hey, I just saw this open, oh.
I don't disagree.
So that would kind of eliminate the, the need for those signs.
I agree. I think that's a great suggestion.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns from members of the audience?
I do not have any questions.
Are there anything online?
Nothing.
Application is closed, and we're on table for discussion, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Okay. Next application is 076 by Laura Savage. Lori Savage, sorry.
Hello.
Heather, do we have Lori?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Lori Savage, 173 Fitzpatrick Trail, West Henrith in New York, 14586.
So Ms. Savage, you are looking to request a one-foot side setback for a hot tub that you are looking to put on a concrete slab. Can you explain the location decision for this hot tub?
Well, there are a couple of factors. We have sort of a unique property. First off, we have drainage on our property and an easement that we were unable to put a privacy fence on the other side without losing a significant amount of property. We have the deck right off of our, our house that we want to put the hot tub on, and it can only really go on the one side to afford us any sort of privacy with the hot tub. So that would, it would be directly budding up against the deck. We have a six-foot privacy fence on either side, so there's no view of the neighbor.
Has there been any concerns with your neighbors regarding the insulation of the hot tub so far? Okay.
Any other comments, questions, concerns from members of the board? Any comments, questions, concerns from members of the audience or online?
Nothing.
Application is closed.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to application ZBA 2020-076 for an area variance, I move to approve. Whereas the zoning board has duly advertised and held a public hearing, has considered all relevant information, and has considered the potential benefits to the application versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variance. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings of facts. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to the characteristic of the neighborhood or detriment to the, to neighboring properties, as it is not in the view of the next-door neighbor. The variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative, as there is a drainage easement on the property, and they are not able to install a second fence on the other side. The variance reflected, reflected, requested is not substantial. The variance will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions. The difficulties resulted in the variance was not self-created, as a fence and drainage easement gives them limited options to put in their hot tub. And be it further resolved that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the variance as presented.
Second.
Second by Jesse. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next application is application 2020-078 by Elaine Richardson.
Hi, this is Elaine Richardson.
You state your name and address for the record, please.
Elaine Richardson, 1100 Farnsworth Road South, Rochester, 14623.
Questions from the board?
Tell us a little bit about why you think you need to have this porch, wooden porch?
Well, the current porch is concrete and cinder blocks, and it was the original porch when I purchased the house in 1977. And since that time, I've had it rebuilt four times over the past 43 years. And currently, the bottom step is, the corner of it is completely deteriorated and fallen off, and both sides are crumbling. It's very unsafe, and I don't want to replace it with another concrete cinder block porch and have the same thing happen. I've recently retired, and I want something low maintenance.
Okay.
And safe.
Yeah, definitely.
Now, the porch you're requesting is going to be nine foot by five feet. Is, is that going to be an adequate enough space for this porch?
Yes, it's big, a little bit bigger than the current one. The current one was only four feet wide, and I want it to be one foot wider to have more room when you open the storm door so that you're not falling off the step.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It isn't any closer to the road, or it's going to be the same distance as the current porch?
The current porch is four feet wide, so it's a 56-foot setback. The new one is going to be five feet wide, which will be a 55-foot setback. So it's only a foot more than the existing one, but I understand that because it's not concrete, it's wood, that I need a variance.
Right, okay. I have no more questions.
Any questions, comments, concerns from members of the audience or online?
Nada.
Application is closed.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to application number ZBA 2020-078 for an area variance, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board has, one, duly advertised and held a public hearing; two, has considered all relevant information; and three, has considered the potential benefit of the applicant versus the potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variance. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings of fact. The variance will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. The new composite wood porch will be more attractive and safer than the current concrete porch. The variance cannot be achieved by some other feasible alternative. Repairing the existing porch is not feasible, as the applicant has already repaired it four times since purchasing the property in 1977. The variance requested is not substantial. The new porch will replace the old porch in the same location. The variance will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions. There will be no changes to the conditions on the property. And the difficulty relating to the variance was self-created. The applicant wishes to improve the property and avoid the continued deterioration of the concrete porch. And be it further resolved that based upon above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the variance as presented.
I'll second.
Second by Heather. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have two tabled applications, Hobby Lobby and the fence.
Yep. Which one do you say?
Let's do the fence first, seems easiest.
So I think, in my opinion, I still don't feel good about that one. I don't feel that I would approve it as we stand today. I'm not opposed to seeing the proposal that Supervisor Schultz represented. So if that's something I'm comfortable for people, I'd be comfortable with that, but I'm, I'm not going to approve it the way it's today without seeing that state.
I feel the same way. That's where I'm at.
I agree also with.
I do have concern about line of sight issues with this, not, not to be able to see better.
Steve, did, did the applicant understand what we're, we're costing?
He did. So he, he understands, he put it in place. I, I gave him the card for Deputy Town Supervisor Craig Eckert, who can go out there and help him make sure it's in the right position, so that it's an accurate representation of where it would be when it's all set. And, you know, he basically said he'll just drive a four-by, or a two-by-four, excuse me, six foot, so it's sticking up six foot, so you'll be able to see height and location. So he understands where it's coming from. Is that correct? He's, applicant nodded his assent.
Right. Okay, so we'll table this application, Heather.
Can I get up first in a second, please?
I'll second that.
Off that, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, Hobby Lobby. Where are you guys sitting on this?
I understand the concern that Jesse is saying, and for me, I agree with signage issues in general on, on Jefferson Road, specifically in that area. I don't like extra signs popping up and around. The, the thing that I, I, hearing your concern, I still think to me that this, in my mind, this is still one sign, however we've given them three variants. So in my opinion, I would approve this all day long. I'm not the biggest fan of it, but I would approve it all day long. The flip side is, you know, we could always ask them to make one sign, so figure out how to make it one. And then it eliminates the other things if it still falls within the square footage.
I'm willing to approve one extra sign, not three. Now, just because it goes in perpetuity with the parcel.
I mean, we've got Michaels there, we've got the.
Burlington.
We just did Burlington.
Sonic, Sonic has a whole bunch of signs under Sonic. They have the. So let's just draw, yes or no?
Yes.
No?
I'm a yes.
Yes.
I'll be yes.
Doug?
Okay. All right. Well, we.
If I could, before you.
Eric?
Yes, if I could, you could condition any approval also with the location or the size of the additional signs, if you did approve the request as is. If the concern is about, hey, they have four signs, and, and if Hobby Lobby leaves, there could be a new business in there that pops up and starts putting signs all over the building. And Doug, I think, I think you've done that in the past.
We did it for Burlington, didn't we? Can't remember how we worded Burlington.
Yeah, a few years ago, we did Burlington, and they had, I don't know, seven signs, because they have coats, person, whatever underneath, and they were all, they were all random.
Make sure you define adjacent, though. Sorry, I couldn't resist.
Okay, we'll back in session with regard to application numbers 2020-073, 074, and 075 for an area variance, I move to approve as follows. Whereas the zoning board is, one, duly advertised and held a public hearing; two, has considered all relevant information; and three, has considered potential benefit to the applicant versus potential detriment to the neighborhood or community in relation to such variances. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals makes the following findings of fact. One, the variances will not result in undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or to a, or a detriment to nearby properties, properties located in a highly commercialized area. Two, the variance cannot be achieved in some other feasible alternative. The additional signs add clarity to what the store is selling. Three, the variance is not substantial, the signs fit within the overall area allowed by the town code. Or the variance will not have a negative effect on physical or environmental conditions. Five, the difficulty relating to the variance was self-created. And be it further resolved that based upon the above findings, the zoning board of appeals hereby approve. And be it further resolved that this approval shall be subject to the following conditions: three signs in locations indicated on the submitted drawings.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You too.
I'll collect one for the fence, if you want, and all your motions. And we'll adjourn tonight's meeting at 8:30 or 8:27.
Thank you.